The views, information, and opinions expressed during the following program are solely those of the individuals involved and do not necessarily represent the views of Access Communications, its representatives, or its employees.
Okay, well, we'll call this meeting to order. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the regular council meeting of April 10th. Under presentations this evening, we have none. Could I have a motion, please, to adopt the agenda as presented? Thank you. Councillor Clark, seconded by Councillor Vroba, ready for the question. All in favor? Carrie, thank you. Next, could we have a motion, please, to accept the council meeting held on March 27th? Thank you. Councillor Wallezer, seconded by Councillor Sernic, ready for the question. All in favor? Carrie, thank you. Next, under original communications, delegations, and petitions, we have nothing this evening. Under written reports of committees, we have the minutes from the Estevan Curling Club for September 20th. Could we have a motion, please, to adopt these? Thank you. Councillor Wallezer, seconded by Councillor Sernic. Any questions or comments? Councillor Wallezer.
Thank you, your worship. As the council-appointed member on this board, the curling season has closed. Hosting the two curling events in Estevan was very successful for the club this year. They were able to kind of fill the coffers and set themselves up financially for success over the next approximately five years from being able to host this event. We did have the last meeting of the year just last week, and what came out loud and clear is that there are not enough teams. The level of competition, the ability to draw people to the sport, is lacking because teams end up playing the same people week after week. So we're really encouraging individuals and businesses to start looking now and see if there's a team that you could pull together for this fall.
Okay, thank you for that, Councillor Wallezer. Hopefully, we can get some good interest. I know Councillor Vroba and Councillor Ford were curling as a team at one point in time. Councillor Vroba?
Thank you, worship. I was just going to say, actually, when I was on the Curling Rink Board, they recruited me to try out the Learn to Curl, and it was actually a lot of fun. So then, from that, we actually joined with Councillor Ford, and there was three other members of our team. And we actually enjoyed the season so much, we had a very short season with Learn to Curl, that we entered the year-end fund bond spill, curling spill. And we have now had our second year as a team that we did that. This year, we had a few different members, but again, it was good because you can't always make every game. And now, those same members, some of us are going to do the Estevan Public Youth Center Cornhole Tournament. So it's amazing how if you get a team together for curling, it can spin off to other events as well. So it's a great, it's a great sport to get into.
Awesome. Super. Okay, all in favor with that? Carrie, thank you. Next, under written reports of committees, we have, from the Estevan Public Library, the minutes of March 21st. Could we have a motion, please, for that? Thank you. Councillor Ford, seconded by Councillor Clark, ready for the question. All in favor? Carrie, thank you. Next, under written reports of committees, we have, from the Service Valley Museum, the minutes of February 15th and March 22nd. Could we have a motion, please, to accept those? Thank you. Councillor Ford, seconded by Councillor Wallezer. Any questions or comments? Councillor Ford.
Thanks, your worship. Councillor Vroba, I just seen the minutes here that they're, the museum is planning on doing a kind of a grand opening or a presentation when the Red River Kart is complete. Is there anything that the city can do to help with that, or are they planning on coming to the city to ask for support or anything?
No, I don't believe that there is any more support than they've already received with the partnership with the Red River Kart. They basically are part participating with the Maytee Nation, and also, they'll be doing a bit of a presentation that day, and so they've gotten some funding through that. And so, no, there was nothing else, but what they are looking for is board members. And they want to say a thank you to the city clerk for putting that notice in the paper under the city page, and they asked for board members. So, yeah, but I definitely would just keep that date in mind for June 21st, and everybody on council is welcome to attend.
Okay, good. And thank you, Councillor Ford, for suggesting, and council for agreeing, that we get that cart. I'm not sure when it's coming, but it'll look nicer. Do you know?
It'll be, I don't know the date, but it'll be before June 21st.
Okay.
Yeah.
It's on a slow boat from China?
Yeah.
I hope it's being made in Manitoba.
Yeah, it's made in Manitoba.
Okay. Good. Did we get a all in favor for that one?
Not yet.
Okay, all in favor? Carrie, thank you. Okay, next, under executive reports, we have, from the Water Treatment Plant Manager, and thank you, Shane, for coming tonight, the Smith Street Electrical and Pump Replacement. Now, these, the electrical and the pumps have to be overhauled. It's a long past its lifetime. Shane is mentioning here, with enlarging the water main on Second Street to 10-inch PVC and replacing the pumps at Smith to variable-speed lead-leg system, we can improve the volume and pressure to the south side. The design for the piping has already been completed and will be incorporated into our water main replacement program. The pump sizes have been sized, and pumps have been selected to replace the current pumps. The pumps will be able to run our current system and have the capacity for future growth and changes if required. With the major design completed, I had sent out a request for proposal for the engineering side of the project. We have the original drawings, and would need updated ones with the potential height and change of the current pipe, with an extra cabinet to house the second variable-speed drive. And the tenders are as follows: KGS 158,00828, Associated Engineering 156,725. Both are reputable companies that I have worked with in the past. They both have the same qualifications. The only difference between the two is the cost. The current budget for the project is $600,000. Design and support should cost around 10% to 15% of that budget. The tenders received back would be around 25% of the budget. The budget for the project would need to be increased significantly to account for this. For this reason, I would recommend rejecting all tenders at this time for this project. The design of the major components are already known. I would like to reach out to the engineering companies that we receive tenders with and figure out a plan to reduce costs or figure out why the costs came in so high. If I'm unable to bring down these costs within the 10% to 15%, I would like to tender individual parts of the project as a package, i.e. electrical as one tender, pumps and piping being a different tender, and manage them all myself. I have done design and coordination of individual parts of the project with other replacements within the water and wastewater facilities. Thank you, Shane, for the report. We'll open the floor to members of council. If you have any questions or comments, go ahead, Councillor Vroba, then Councillor Clark.
Thank you, worship. I was just going to say, Shane, I agree with you. I think you're quite qualified and able to do that. If they can't bring the cost down, then I think that's a great solution that you've come up with.
Okay, thank you, Councillor Vroba. Councillor Clark?
Thanks, your worship. Just wondering, Shane, would be the thought that you would spend part of the $600,000 or just see how far you could go?
So with the $600,000, I did the planning design and costs. I've worked with several contractors, and I've done other projects similar to this. I already know what the pump costs are. That was part of that study for the pump replacement and the pipe enlargement. So those came in around $60,000 a pump. The cabinets, we've replaced the electrical cabinets on Wellack, and then I have reached out to the company, so I have continuity between all my different facilities. So if something breaks, I can just go to the other facility and grab something not as important and stick it in there while I'm waiting for a replacement. And I have those costing about $200,000 to $260,000 for those. The VFDs would be roughly about $30,000 each-ish. So the $600 ballpark is, it's just, when you're doing projects like this, it's always nice to have that engineering backup. If it's going to be that expensive, it's all stuff I've worked with in the past.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Councillor Clark, and thank you, Shane, for agreeing to do that. I mean, sometimes these costs do get a little bit out of line. Any, go ahead, Councillor.
Thanks, worship.
Frank.
To Shane. Have you, I don't know if you have since you've written this report, have you had a chance to talk to them about why the costs would be so much higher? Do you have any guesses as to why it would be so much higher than expected?
For most part now, it's really the travel that kind of comes into play. Any sort of additional trip for the water tower that engineering came in, because welding isn't exactly my strong side. So I had, KGS came down and did welding inspections, and those were roughly about $6,000 a trip. So, you know, you do five to 10 trips or site meetings and things like that. It adds up very quickly. What I need to do is kind of go back to them and figure out, where can we find a happy medium? I still might need engineering support, but this is just more of a way to figure out how to kind of cut down on the travel and the time.
Okay, thank you, Councillor Frank. Councillor Sernic?
Thank you, worship. Yeah, with it just being kind of electrical and pumps, is there any, anybody local that can handle the situation?
I'll reach out to local now that I know where it is. Most times, the manufacturer will pretty much lay out what you want. Seeing how this is part of the federal grant fund, it is something I do have to tender and have to go by those rules, and especially for the cost of the replacements. But I can frame it, and then, once I put it on, I always reach out to local people to give, to get the chance to bid on it.
Just follow, with the engineering, like, is there going to be, like, are the, if the pumps are the same, like, is there going to be that much engineering involved in it? No?
I don't believe so. That's why I was kind of surprised with the cost that came back for the project. You know, it used to be five grand to do, you know, an AutoCAD drawing, engineered AutoCAD drawing. Now, that's up to 10. But those are sort of the sort of things that I could freehand or make out, and I have done it before, the back washline replacement, I just did that.
It does make you wonder what these companies are doing. Are they following our grocery stores and doubling everything? I don't know, but I hope not. Okay, well, we do appreciate, Shane, you being willing to shoulder those extra burdens. Go ahead, Councillor.
I'd just like to make the recommendation, then, that we proceed with Shane looking into the-
With Shane's recommendation?
Right, that we go ahead with that, because I think you're right, Shane. I think if you do the majority of the work, and they just have to come down and do the odd inspection for you to be able to sign off on it, then I think that's going to be a great solution. So I'll make the recommendation.
Okay, you'll make the motion? Okay?
The motion, yeah.
Thank you. Have we got a seconder? Thank you, Councillor Frank, ready for the question? All in favor? Carrie, thank you. Next, under executive reports, we have, again, from Shane, Water Services Manager, the water quality report. It looks great, Shane. We've met every parameter or exceeded them, so another great report. Did you have any comments on that?
No. Luckily, it was a pretty eventful month, which I always like.
Yeah, exactly. Totally. Okay, well, thank you for that. Have we got a motion to accept the, oh, you have a question? Well, we'll go ahead with the motion. Councillor Ford, and seconded by, go ahead, Councillor Clark.
Thanks, your worship. Just wondering, with the talk, it seems to be, the talk seems to be that they'll be using the water from Rafferty for nuclear. Is there any concerns on that, seeing now that's where we're now drawing our water from?
So anytime there's an application to the Water Security Agency who manages that, that is part of the downstream use study, much like what we had to do with the wastewater plant, of doing the downstream use study to see who's affected by it. And then, we do have a say on what the quality or what their parameters are around that.
Thank you.
Okay, go ahead, Councillor Sernic.
Thank you, worship. I'm not sure why, I want to know, but when the inspector comes, do they give you a heads-up or do they just show up?
Usually, they give me about a week's heads-up, just so I can kind of get all the paperwork and everything all together for them. But they can pop by whenever they want. Doesn't really bother me.
Which is a good thing, Councillor Sernic. We have nothing to hide. Yeah. Okay, all in favor? Carrie, thank you. Okay, next, under executive reports, thank you, Shane, we have, from Public Works, a dust control tender. Now, the recommendation is that 2023 Dust Control Program be awarded to four distributors at a cost of $126,000 plus tax. And number two, that a tender and award of the annual dust control program be delegated to the roads drainage manager to ensure timely application and in conjunction with the RM's dust control program. We work very closely with the RM on this dust control. Annually, the city's tenders and the dust control program for distributors have supplied and applied the product the past few years with great results. This product's longevity comes with superior service. The price is for two applications, early summer and early fall, to control the dust. The product is magnesium chloride or seawater that has been concentrated and refined. So what's the wish of council on this? Do we have a motion for that? Thank you, Councillor Sernic. Have we got a seconder? Thank you. Oh, we have a question. Thank you. Go ahead, Councillor Frank.
Thanks, worship. And I could be wrong on this, but was there not a few streets that we went to three times a year last year?
Excuse me? What was that?
Were there a few, were there not a few streets last year that we went to three times a year? This just shows once and twice a year.
I think you're right. I think there was one or two that we did three times.
Down in the Debonian area and things like that?
I believe so, yes. So I would think those will be done again like that unless it's under-
I was going to say, I was just understanding we were going to go into it and do that.
Yeah, with his discretion.
Can we, yeah, I guess I would, I would be fine with going ahead with this tender. Obviously, the company's pretty much our only option, but I would, I would like to, unless there was an issue, which I don't, I didn't think there was, I think at the end of the year, we thought that was quite successful, I would like to go ahead with that, plus the three times a year, the same streets we did last year.
Yeah, well, if you like, Norv is gone getting his daughter married, but we can answer that question for the next meeting?
Yeah, no problem.
I think there might have been a few that we did three times, and again, usually, it's up to Norv's discretion.
For sure. Are we able to prove that motion with that change, or no? I suppose not, now that we've made motions.
Oh, I'm sure. I mean, we can answer the question, but I think it's important that-
Yeah.
-we get started on this.
To move forward, just to make sure, yeah, unless there was any significant issue, which I'm sure Norv would come back to us with, but otherwise, I would like to see us do it, the same as we did last year, so.
Okay, so you'll make that motion?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Have we got a seconder? Okay, Councillor Ford, ready for the question? All in favor? Thank you. Okay, next, under executive reports, we have, from Land Development Business License Renewal Update, and thank you, Richard, for coming tonight.
Your worship, I think I'm going to declare a conflict on this. My, where my, my workplace is not actually in the city of Estevan, but I actually work from home, and so some of the decisions made tonight will be affecting my business and how my business is ran.
Okay, appreciate that, Councillor Ford. Let it be noted, city clerk, the Councillor Ford has left the council chambers for this particular issue. Oh, Councillor Sernic?
I guess so.
Oh, you as well? Okay, let it be noted, Councillor Sernic as well, has left council chambers with a conflict. Okay, Richard, did you want to give us a thumbnail sketch?
I'm borderline in conflict on one of the items.
Oh, yeah, you're, yeah, you as well. Well, you're not leaving, sorry.
I can't leave.
Okay.
Excuse my cough again. It's almost done. It's only been in the fifth week now. Last time I was up in front of council, there was a request, and I said there was going to be a, an update on what happened with the rollout, and here we are. So you see on the first page there, a table, so we're about 30 licenses behind where we were at the end of last year. So that's not too bad. We'll probably meet that 637 number from 2022 here before long, because there's always one-time contractors that come in and that kind of thing throughout the year. The rollout, as we said, we sent notices out in early December of last year with a due date in January 31st, and then, if people don't renew, we contact them, and generally, by March 1st or so, we're, we're caught up on last year renewals. If you look on page two, we had 65 businesses from 2022 that did not renew, and there's a variety of reasons for that, and as you can see, the largest one was the business-ended operations. Then, there's a variety of other ones, excuse me, things like the business was purchased by another company, business relocated. We also had some interpretation issues that we had to deal with. One, for example, would be a, a business that would, for example, be located in RM, but they weren't actually trying to sell their goods in the city. They would either, they would take orders online, and then maybe at most, what they would do is deliver to the city. And for something like that, when we talked to them, we told them, no, no, you don't need a business license. You can get one if you want, but now that the business license for that kind of thing isn't, is more than a nominal cost, they would choose not to do it. So that happened. We had a couple cases where individuals decided not to renew their business license because they thought that the price for the renewal was a little higher than they would be comfortable with. And we also had some licenses that we had to pursue more than once, but we got most of that overall, overall done now. There was a couple other things that happened going forward. What we'd like to do, might, if we want to, we can call an enforcement program. The first step would be a written notification going out to businesses that we've identified that are operating without a license. And so we would then contact them in writing and give them sort of a questionnaire even, and explain to them that if you meet any of these conditions, you're going to have to, you need a business license, and then we'll go from there. We also would like to, for businesses that have been operating in the city without a license, they've never had a license before, but they've been operating, would like to do a media blitz and put a 45-day amnesty in, where if they come forward, they would be exempted from any fines or any other charges. They would just be treated like a new business coming in. Hopefully, that would bring in some people, and maybe that could build some goodwill. And then, another issue that came in was home-based businesses that are headquartered within the city of Estevan but do not do any business within Estevan. That can be, for example, a home office like mine, where all my clients are out of province. Or it could be a person running a home office and their clientele's all, say, oilfield work outside of the city. One argument could be that if they're working and all their clientele is outside the city, why should they need to have a business license? Another argument, on the other hand, would be, they're running a business, is it really here nor there to the municipality as to where your clientele's located? Now, for myself, I'm supporting the second alternative. I can't unpersonally support the first alternative because I would directly benefit from that decision. So if council wants to do that, you're going to have to do that without a recommendation from me, because I would have to declare conflict of interest on that point. Finally, we have some home-based businesses that, they may be advertising as a business, but in reality, other than their mailbox, they're not doing anything in the city. Their clientele's either a commercial office outside the city or something similar, their accounting's all done off-site. There's really no business activity doing, going on in their home. Those people, in our view, under existing bylaw, would be exempt from requiring a business license, and that is something that we find and determine as we talk to individuals.
Okay.
And then, sorry.
Oh, go ahead.
One more item. It's expected, because a business license, unless it's a mobile food truck, just like a development permit, it's attached to a physical address. So if a person's running a home-based business and they relocate, either they buy another house and move, or they are renters and they change to another place, under our current bylaws, they have to start right from scratch. And one of the things that came up in this, in discussion with Shared Services, who does administration on this bylaw with me, was if they've got a business license already and it's in good standing, they've been operating with no problems at all, there's no disruption to the neighborhood from their clientele or anything like that, we could maybe consider giving them a reduced rate if they do move, because they do have to get a new license, new development permit, but instead of a $200 business license if it's Class II, have them, you know, maybe $30, because all that pre-checking and their track record and everything could be used to justify it. That is something that I would like to support. That wouldn't happen that often in a year, probably be a handful of times or less. Current rates, as you can tell, are on the last page here, so if we changed it to $30, that would save $70 on a Class I permit, development permit, and $45 on the business license. We think that would be the right thing to do. And then, from that, your worship and council, I have a recommendation here in three parts for your consideration.
Okay, thank you, Richard. Councillor Vroba, you had a question?
Thank you, worship. I actually had a few different questions, and so, just to go back to the one where, if a business is already located in Estevan and they decide to move, right now, this just actually happened to my massage therapist. She was located in one business, and then she had to move, she was going to another business, and that building that she moved into already had a chiropractor and massage therapist in it, and she had to apply for a new business license, which, when I first heard that, I thought was odd, because to me, you just change your address. Now, I would understand that you would have to do another development permit or et cetera if there wasn't anyone else doing that service in that area, and it was a brand-new service to that area. But do we not have the ability to look at each situation and say, okay, well, you don't need that because you've already got everything else, you're in good standing, we already know that that building is used for those purposes, we'll just switch the address?
We have to issue a new license for that, so by bylaw, it needs to start from square one again? Now, in the situation that you're speaking of, is she like an employee of the-
No, she would be the business owner.
She's the business owner? So, so she moved her storefront from one location to another?
Right.
Yeah, they would have to get a new license and everything from square one on that.
Yeah, so that's just, I, I don't know how the rest of council feels, but I felt, when I first heard that, that we should be able to, as a city, streamline, streamline that position or that process a little bit more. And again, I, maybe I don't know all the details on that, but if all it is is basically moving from one to another, I get it if it's something to do with the, if you had to do something with the fire system, or you had to do all of that, like, does that come into play? Is that why?
Well, that would be more building code, right?
Right.
So the development permit's a zoning approval that what you're doing there is permissible, and you have enough parking and all that kind of thing to accommodate it, and then the license is the license to operate.
Right.
So that all has to start from square one when they relocate as a storefront, yeah.
Yeah, I just, I know, just me personally, I think that's odd that we do that, and yet, I understand that there's things there that, I guess I'm not thinking it should be the same price. I feel like there should be a reduced rate for that. The other thing is, if somebody is operating a home-based business, I guess not even a home-based business, so with COVID, it brought in where a lot of people are working from home. So it isn't their business. So let's say I've got an office in my home, and I work for a company that's located in Midale. They do all their business in the RMs, they do all of that, but I choose to work from my home computer, which is property of the business in Midale, because I don't want to drive to Midale, and I can do all of the invoicing and everything from home. In that situation- In that situation, do you think I should have to have a business license?
Definitely not.
Okay. And so those are the things that, sometimes the city gets a bad rap because when the city reaches out to people, people get a bit defensive. But I also think in the situation I'm going to talk about is the one I called you about, Richard, when the city calls somebody out of the blue, when that person called me, again, what Richard had said to me was, it would have been nice if the person would have phoned me. But sometimes people get excited because they feel that, you know, we're going after them. I would like to make a recommendation in the future, any conversation that we have with someone who we think could possibly, if we're thinking that they could, whatever, have a business, we send a letter. Because that way, things can't also...
That's what's in my recommendation.
Right. And then that way, things can't get misconstrued or, you know, oh, I didn't realize, that's what they said. Because again, a lot of times, if you phone somebody who is feeling that you're asking questions, they right away stop listening and they start thinking and start wondering, am I doing something wrong? Even if they're doing nothing wrong, sometimes we automatically go into that. So that's why I just recommend that we send a letter first with a follow-up phone call if needed, and that can be put into the letter that basically states, if the city doesn't hear back from you, and again, with your recommendation about the fees and late fees and penalties, if the city doesn't hear back from somebody within a 14-day period, et cetera, that kind of thing, whatever you decide, then I think at that time, it's acceptable if the city follows up with a phone call because they have the letter to review, to fall back on, and to look at and fully understand. I do agree with you and I think it's good that your department is following up with people. I think it's good that people that are doing business in the city of Estevan have the licenses. And I think, like you said, with the enforcement, but you're also doing education, that will also be a benefit because some people who are doing work-from-home things, or some people who own a business in Estevan and have a home office as well, may be confused if they needed two business licenses. So that was all my comments. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Vroba. Any other questions or comments? So we've got a couple. Go ahead, Counselor Clark.
Thanks, Worship. Certainly in agreement with the change to the $30 fee. I would imagine if somebody was moving from one side of Main Street to the other side of Main Street and just operating that business, they would have had to do a new license. So I think in that case, I think reasonably, we're just making one little address change and nothing's there. So I agree with that. And I think even with the 45 days, I think it shows that we're trying to work with the community and I hope that we can continue to do that. In the list on the front page where it talks about the number of licenses, is it possible to have a dollar value there to see what our dollar value is by year to year? Or is that, just so that we could tell, especially this year, if we've had a change in, in the amount, I was just wondering, has our amount that we've collected changed much?
The amount collected should have been an increase from last year. We are publishing to the executive assistant a monthly report. Every month you should be getting as to activity, number of business licenses issued, what have you. I believe the dollar value is included in that for both business licenses and development permits on a month-by-month basis.
Okay, Counselor Clark, go ahead. Counselor Frank.
Thank you, Worship. This may be more in line with our building bylaw, but one question I had was around signage on businesses that don't exist anymore or aren't in business. Is there a way that through either our business license or through our building bylaw, we can kind of try to eliminate that? And I'm referring, you know, the derrick was torn down, the sign's still there, just kind of looks, it doesn't make the community look good. The other example would be across the street from my building, there's a laundromat that doesn't launder clothes. So, but the sign has been up for years and so that's the kind of thing that I wonder if we can, just as a way of kind of beautifying the community and cleaning some things up that are a little left unsettled, as well as preventing potentially a couple unsavory, not real businesses showing themselves off around town? If we could tie that to something to try to get, try to reduce that, is there an option for that somewhere?
Go ahead, Richard, and then...
The answer to that one's actually under the zoning bylaw, which would fall under my purview. And that is definitely something we can do. First contact on that, if it's someone that we have a, if I have a good relationship with, I'd give them a call, ask them what their long-term plans are, could you remove that sign if you're not using it? Otherwise, it would be something in writing. And if they don't reserve, if they don't remove it, potentially it's either an enforcement on my behalf or one through city bylaw, if it had to be.
That'd be appreciated.
Okay, good. Thank you, Counselor Frank. Counselor Vroba.
Thank you, Worship. And I also agree with Counselor Frank, there's a laundromat on Fifth Street that put a sign up and has never opened its doors. And whatever that reason being, somebody obviously owns that building. And I just think there has to be a reason why someone put a sign up but not ever open. Could be whatever it is, but it's just something we should look at for the city. I don't think it's good to have businesses not operating but have signs up, and especially one that never even started operation. The other thing is, I just looked at our building permit report that we do get monthly and also our monthly breakdown, and it doesn't look like we do actually get a value of actual business licenses. So we get a permit, we get the value of the permit, and we get the amount of permits that have been issued for garages, institutional, industrial, commercial, multifamily, and single-family. But we don't actually have the business license amount in there, I don't believe.
Okay, I can definitely get that to you because I have the, for the first quarter and I also have to the 15th of the month, of every month. I've been supplying that information through, to Melanie's office, but I don't know what happens with it after it gets there.
And it's probably just because these are the two reports that we get every month, so that information is probably just filed.
It wouldn't be in the building report, it would be a separate one. But I can definitely send that to you because I had up-to-date information this morning.
Yeah, even if we get it annually, if that would be enough to satisfy Counselor Clark.
Okay, thank you. That's all you had, Counselor Vroba? Okay, we'll ask for a motion then, and I'll go over the recommendations one more time. Based upon the above, Land Development Services requests council consideration of the following points. Number one, council authorize a time-limited waiver of late fees and penalties to businesses that have been operating without a business license in the previous years for 45 days concurrently with the advertising blitz. Number two, that the city continue to make home-based businesses that are located within the city and conduct business activities within the home, subject to the requirements for a home-based business license. And number three, that relocation of an existing licensed home-based business be subject to a $30 fee for a new license and development permits. Do we have a motion to move forward with that? Counselor Wally, sir?
One more question first.
Okay. Go ahead.
Richard, I'm struggling to understand the difference from a workload perspective from doing a new license and development permit for a home-based business versus any other business. If you've already established a relationship with the home-based business and that's why we're offering a reduction of fees, could we not use the same argument to say that a commercial business operating in Estevan would have that same relationship and should also justify the reduction of fees?
The, in one respect, it is an apples-to-apples comparison. And another one, it's not. One, for example, with the home-based business, we're not worried about water and sewer loads, as you would be, say, for example, with a restaurant. The main thing about a home-based business that we're looking at is, is it a disruption in the neighborhood in terms of parking, noise, odors, what have you? With respect to commercial, one thing I didn't highlight in this report, but we've had it for numerous years, if you have an existing commercial business and you relocate to another address, or say you close down your business and somebody moves into that same location with something same or similar within a year, we, the requirement for development permit is completely waived. And the business license still applies because it's a new business, new license. But it's dependent on the impact that the business may have on the neighborhood. So for example, if a shoe store changed to a dress shop, we wouldn't require a new development permit. If the shoe store changed to a eatery or a liquor store or something like that, then we would. So we probably, I would say it's probably around several dozen commercial businesses each year are able to skip straight to the business license track without having to do a development permit. I'm hoping that addresses your question, but...
Yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Were you willing to make a motion, Counselor Wally, sir? No, Counselor Vroba.
I just wanted to clarify, so just with this home-based business, number three, I guess where I'm thinking is, if I live on Third Street and I'm selling Tupperware out of my home, and then I relocate to a condo in a small cul-de-sac, that would be the reasoning for the $30, is because it's not just a address change. Now I have to see whether or not is my business that I have applied for, having 14 cars a week, a month, a day, attend my business? And if so, are the people in the neighborhood going to be okay? So a lot of times, we do, if not all the times, you will send out a notice to all of the people around that business to let them know that there's a new business coming near us.
I will at times, yes.
Yeah. So I can see why. And the other thing, if we pass this tonight, does this go to where we have another reading so people will actually come back with their comments? Or does this just get changed tonight?
This gets changed tonight.
Gets changed tonight.
Yeah. Go ahead, Richard.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. What I'm asking for here, both the planning fees bylaw and the business license bylaw have provisions in there where, under certain circumstances, the fees can be modified. And so what this is doing is seeking council support for that in these specific situations. And then, starting late fall for the 2024 year, I would be presenting you with amendments to the fee schedules for both the planning fees bylaw and the business license bylaw to actually codify it in actual.
So then at that time, we can make the change.
So you could raise further questions at that time.
And you could raise at that time.
Yeah. So I will make the recommendation that we proceed, the motion that we proceed with your three recommendations that you have here, Richard, and then we can relook at it when the, if we get any feedback from the community at the time, in the fall. Yeah.
Thank you, Counselor Vroba. Have we got a second? Okay, thank you, Counselor Clark. Ready for the question? All in favor? Carrie, thank you. Yes, Richard, please let our two prisoners back in. Let it be noted that Counselor Ford and Counselor Cernick have re-entered council chambers. Okay, next, under executive reports, we have, from Land Development, 2023, proposed Sasktel 5G tower on Kensington. Land Development Services is processing a development permit application for a proposed conversion of an existing 4G communication tower to a 5G. As proposed use is discretionary, it requires a decision from council. Background and discussion, application number, DP 011-2023, civic address, 298 Kensington Avenue, legal description, Lot 3, Block 305, Plan 98S E09042, zoning classification, industrial M1, use classification, telecommunications tower, discretionary use, proposed use, Sasktel 5G tower. The proposed 35-meter tower, if approved by council, would replace the existing 30-meter 4G tower. The new tower would be scheduled to be constructed within the next year. Consideration, the review process was initiated with contact from Sasktel to Land Development Services in late 2022. In early 23, Sasktel initiated their own referral to area landowners. No responses were received. Following the initial consultation, Sasktel applied for development permit approval through a discretionary use application. To date, no responses have been received by Land Development Services with respect to this application. Facts, the towers are jointly used by Sasktel, Telus, and Bell. Rogers uses its own tower at the northern limits of the city. 5G equipment is heavier than 4G equipment, which results in a need for a new tower structure. Existing 4G towers are removed as part of the construction of a new 5G tower in the same location. Approving authority for tower equipment is Health Canada and the agency that was formerly known as Industry Canada, in brackets, Innovation Science and Economic Development Canada. Landlines drop in number every day in Saskatchewan, which makes cellular towers important infrastructure for emergency services. If approved, standard conditions would apply, along with the reclamation of the existing 4G tower and base once a 5G tower is operational. Recommendation, the council approved DP 011-2023 as presented, subject to standard conditions and reclamation of the existing 4G tower once it's no longer needed. So what's the wish? Did you have anything further to say on this, Richard?
Thank you, Worship. Yeah, just in case anybody's receiving any contact traffic from ratepayers in the neighborhoods, this is one of three towers that's currently under consideration by Sasktel. The other one's on McDonald Drive or McDonald Road down near Hill Cross School. And the other one is up near the park on Henry Street. Those are two separate applications. I would expect probably in the near future, a fourth application to be a replacement for the 4G tower that's on the Sasktel building across Fourth Street from City Hall.
Okay, thank you, Richard. What's the wish of council? Have we got a motion? Counselor Cernick?
I'll make the motion.
Okay.
And then, once he's decided, question after the motion.
Okay, thank you. Have we got a second? Counselor Frank? Okay, go ahead. Go ahead, Counselor Cernick.
Just into, like you're saying about the 5G towers going up, there's obviously some safety concerns out there in the residential areas. I was just wondering if we could ask Sasktel to hold some sort of, or put out a safety bulletin?
Like an open house even, or?
Open house or something, just to, like, I mean, if people have the concerns, they can, they can talk to Sasktel because obviously I don't know anything about...
Yeah, we don't know all of the background.
Yeah, so, and like I said, there's, I've been bombarded with questions and it'd be just nice if they put something that would assure, assures people their safety.
Yeah, that's a fair comment. Thank you. Counselor Frank?
Thanks, Worship, and I very much agree with that. Counselor Cernick, that's a great idea because one thing, it's, I've had a few of those comments, and one thing just to give consider, or give to the people is, we don't really have control over what Sasktel puts on the towers. What we have control of is whether or not they build a tower, so, and the height of the tower and size of it isn't really of a concern to the city. So what they put on it is something that Sasktel can answer for because they have that right through federal...
Yeah, the more information we can get for our citizens, the better. Thank you both for that. Counselor Vroba?
Thank you, Worship. Yes, I too would be interested in attending that because I have a question. I know a lot of people are concerned about the 5G towers, and yet we all put our cellphones right up to our ear every day, all day. We hold them in our pocket, we hold them in our purse, they're sitting right beside us at all times. So I would be interested to find out from Sasktel, what is the difference between having a tower? I live close to McDonald Road, so the tower would be right there in my neighborhood, too. What is the difference between having a tower in my neighborhood or having my cellphone in my pocket? So I will be interested and I will attend if we can get what Counselor Cernick is asking for.
I'm sure we can. Thank you for that. Richard?
Hi, yeah. We have the option to require an open house as part of the development permit. We didn't require it in this case because there was no responses, both on Sasktel's initial review and on the mail-out that I did. I have received one letter. If anyone else, like in council, if you're receiving, especially if it's something in writing, if I can get a copy of it, that's great because I can't respond to something as the person responsible for these things if I don't see it. So that'd be really appreciated if you can do that. But what I can do, the, the mail-out for the McDonald Road tower went out last week for the development permit. The development permit for the one at Henry Street hasn't been applied for. What I can do is contact Sasktel and have it, have them do an open house for 5G towers in general throughout the city and hold that. And I can, I'll get back to suit through the city clerk when that's been arranged.
Thank you, Richard. Appreciate that. We'll make sure as the council...
We'll make sure as the council, all of the comments we get will forward to you as well. Okay, thank you. Okay, council ready? Oh, go ahead, Councilor Ford.
Sorry, Your Worship, thank you. I just, you had mentioned that Sasktel had received no feedback, but this was only for the Kensington Avenue. So only the landowners around the Kensington Avenue business area was, were notified, correct?
For this particular application, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, ready for the question, all in favor? Carrie, thank you.
Okay, next, under executive reports, we have Land Development Glen Peterson Neighborhood Plan. With the official, official community plan, OCP, the zoning bylaw adopted, the city now has the option to prepare neighborhood plans. A neighborhood plan is discussed in Section 47 of the OCP. This project was initiated a few years ago after the city was experiencing issues with sales at the Glen Peterson Industrial Park and one or more hotels at the Walmart area were going through some occupancy challenges. A proposed solution was to allow for a new approach that would include, among other things, residential development within the area, pathways, college dormitories, a conversion of the industrial park to more closely resemble a business park. Council approved the project and an initial draft was approved for public circulation. A committee of landowners within the neighborhood area contributed to the overall theme and goals of the plan. Since then, a few updates have been made to the document and it has served as a reference to prospective new landowners within the neighborhood. Overall, the document has been well received. Since the last update was made to the document, it was run through the City Operations Group for review and comment. Next steps, as this neighborhood plan is a single phase and is almost fully developed, it can be adopted by resolution rather than bylaw in accordance with our OCP and Section 44 of the Planning and Development Act. Through a public open house, though a public open house was held in conjunction with the open houses held as part of the OCP review process, these consultations were held several years ago. It is suggested that a single open house be held prior to consideration by council for eventual adoption. Following input from an open house, a document can be given approval, consideration by council, through resolution. No formal public hearing or bylaw is required. Recommendation, it is recommended that the Land Development Services host an open house to provide stakeholders with an interest in the Glen Peterson Neighborhood Plan to dialogue with the city prior to further consideration of the plan. Anything further, Richard?
No, thank you, Your Worship, that's.
Okay, what's council's wish on this? Councilor Ford?
Your Worship, just, just a question. The last open house, I know it was a couple of years ago, was it well attended? Do you know or remember?
Usually we have one or two people.
So could I make the recommendation that with this open house, or add to the recommendation that with this open house, we don't, we all know that open houses are not well attended. We host the in-person open house, so the people who want to go can actually come. But we also create some sort of online survey, so people can actually take a look at this document and if, if they're pressed for time or whatever, they can actually take a look at this document and take, and kind of put their feedback online as well. But I would suggest maybe doing the open house first, so then people can come. And then if you don't want to come to that, then do the survey online.
Okay, thank you, Councilor Ford. That's a good idea to get more feedback. Are you okay with that, Richard?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion? Councilor Clark?
I'd like to suggest that we have that open house at the college, so that people can physically be out there and do that. A couple of other small things. The naming of that King Street, is that an official thing or like, I don't like it? I think it should be a different name on there, because I think King Street kind of. Is that just where it is? And if we ever have a street there, can we make sure that it's paved? So we don't end up with some of the other areas that we have in town that have never got paved in a new development?
My, my understanding is that King Street Extension, as it's now known, is built to a roadbed. It just hasn't had gravel and then paving. I believe water and sewer lines haven't been installed at this point either. But, you know, the roadbed is there, so my assumption is that the day will come, that'll be an operational road. I'm not sure what day, what year, but it will happen. With respect to the name, yes, you're, you're right. When you get east of Kensington, King Street branches off in two directions. One curls south to Nesbit and the other one goes north around that pond to the corner on the north. And then straight east and where it meets the bypass by the Petrocan. Both are named King Street. It definitely would be something to worthwhile to consider renaming. I would suggest it's probably easier to rename the section that is on that map above your head there, because the other leg that says King Street is in two different municipalities.
Okay, thank you for that, Richard. I think we'll have to give that due consideration as a council. It would make sense to change this little guy here. Because the other one, King, if you follow it through, it goes straight. And like you say, it goes into the RM. But it would make sense for that to remain King, to avoid confusion.
Yes, because we have no addresses based on this extension. There'd be no one, no businesses having to change anything.
Yeah, exactly. So now would be a good time. And if council likes, we can drag out that page that the city clerk conscientiously updates every day. And we can go over prospective names, if council likes, that we have on there. Go ahead, Councilor Cernick.
Thank you, Worship. Just reading through the document and everything, there was a little bit of talk of joining Nesbit with the Walmart area? Or did I read that wrong? Like a future recommendation, there was.
You mean for the land use on the properties?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So that, I just, where, I guess, where would it be?
Yeah, the part that's orange, under the old zoning bylaw, that was only to be expansion for the mall. The part that's orange is owned by a private developer. And then the one, the part that looks like a boomerang in orange around, that's owned by us, by the city. And so under this, under this proposed plan, that could still be a extension of the Walmart box store mall. It could also be the site for a dormitory for the college. Or it could be retirement home. There's been a number of situations that you've seen, that I've seen, especially, I think, one of the newer ones is Medicine Hat, Alberta, where they built a retirement community right beside a Walmart. And the synergy there was actually pretty good. So that is an option.
Who doesn't like Walmart?
And then the other option, you know, and what I would like to see would be, you know, would be something that'd be at a higher density, maybe like a three or four-story building, where the main floor is commercial and then the upper floors would be, whether it be supportive living or what have you, some kind of seniors housing.
Okay, well, thank you, Richard. And Councilor Cernick, I guess we can flesh out out in further meetings, you know, as we think about what that may look like down the road. Okay.
For the open houses?
Yeah, make the motion for the open house, okay?
And survey.
And survey. Okay, have we got a second? Thank you, Councilor Ford. Ready for the question, all in favor? Carrie?
Thank you.
Okay, next, under executive reports, we have from the building official, the official building permits, permit, permits for 2023. Could we get a motion, please, for those? Thank you, Councilor Clark, seconded by Councilor Wolliser. Ready for the question, all in favor? Carrie, thank you. Last but not least, from the fire chief, we have the reports for the month of January, February, and March of 23. Could we get a motion, please, for those? Thank you, Councilor Ford, seconded by. Counselor Veroba, thank you. Ready for the question, all in favor? Carrie? Next, under introduction of bylaws, we have none. Public hearings and reports, we have none. Giving notice, no giving notice this evening. Motions from committee, we have none this evening. Consideration of bylaws, we have. Bylaw 2023-2069, borrowing bylaw for 2023 capital projects. Tonight, we will ask for second and third readings. So right now, I will ask for second reading of bylaw 2023-2069, borrowing bylaw for 23 capital projects. Thank you, Councilor Wolliser. Seconded by Councilor Cernick. Ready for the question, all in favor? Carrie, thank you. Now I will ask for third reading and adoption for use of bylaw 2023-2069, borrowing bylaw for 2023 capital projects. Counselor Veroba, seconded by Councilor Clark. All in favor? Carrie, thank you very much. Next, inquiries, Counselor Veroba.
Thank you, Worship. I had an inquiry from a business owner down on the service road off of Perkins Street. And they are concerned about the drainage issues. They said that the drainage issues down there, he's tried to do some ditch digging himself and the water is going into his building and it's not very good. He owns three different lots down there. But he's also talked to some of the other business owners down there. And like, he said, the road is just atrocious at most times throughout the year. They do business on that one end, but then as you get further south, it goes into the trailer court. So I was just kind of also wondering if we could just get a report when Norm Mack is back and just get, kind of see if, I think, because again, the business owner said Norm is aware of it, if what we've done in the past to help alleviate the problem, if there's something we could do in the future. And also, do we own the entire road going into the trailer court? Or because that is a bareland condominium, do we stop at a certain point? Like the access road and then it goes off to the south, is that all ECF?
The trailer court is a private property. And yeah, that's our road up to their property.
Right, I just wasn't sure where their property starts, because they have the 400 row of trailer courts once you hit around the corner. But when you have the access road that goes, if you take a left, you're going towards the businesses. If you take a right, you're going into the trailer court. So I was just curious to know at which part do we stop grading the snow?
We can find out about that, Richard, and give you the exact ownership on that, Counselor Veroba. As a rule, every time our grader is in the area, we do grade that roadway. And city clerk was good enough to ask Haley, and I have got a report that I will read. This has been an ongoing problem for years. The businesses on the east side, such as Four Store and Border Cleaning, pile their snow on the edge of their lots. And as it melts, so this tends to be worse in the spring, especially after a heavy snow like this past year, it runs across the service road, which creates potholes. I can only do temporary fixes, like putting gravel down in the mornings before it starts melting. But once it starts melting, I can't do anything to fix, as the water just runs across the road and putting material there would be pointless, it would just wash away. There was a cement swale installed at the corner of 47 South, Service Road in Perkins, which catches most of the water coming down Perkins that goes into the ditch on the west side of the service road, but not all of it. So we have water coming from there too. I can't put a trench along the east side to stop the water from crossing the service road either, because there's manholes and then there would have, you'd have the big dip to cross to get into the businesses. I hope that this helps. So I think the worst of it, you know, is after we get this runoff taken care of, Counselor Veroba.
Yeah.
I think we'll be able to fix that roadway up into a passable condition and keep it up.
Okay, yeah, because the business owner I spoke with also did speak about these two businesses on the corner. And again, he just said, from what he had heard, they used to pile their snow across the street, but then they were told by the city to stop doing that, and that's why the snow is now placed at the end of their property. And so if it's all the snow hills that are making the issue, which I think it's also coming from behind them, they have the hill going up from McDonald Road down, so they have a lot of the snow that's coming down too.
That's right.
They're fighting a lot of different things there, but I just thought if we could at least, again, it sounds like we've already looked into some of the issues. But he would like to see if we could have a serious look at the drainage issues. And so I said with Keflum, maybe there was a way that Keflum could even look at it with being a water engineer, if there was a way.
Well, again, you know, we could look at culverts, but that'll have to go through engineering.
Yeah.
We can refer that, if you like, to Keflum to start looking at that, see what he might have. As a game plan, he is somewhat of a drainage expert, so.
That's what I thought, and that's why I thought if we could at least to show that we're doing our due diligence to try and find a plan of some kind, then it would at least help to start the conversation going.
And also perhaps what we can do is ask why that wasn't put on the other side of the roadway and then it would just melt in that ditch and then run through the culverts, you know? I'm not sure why that was changed, but again, I'm sure we'll get the answer on that.
Or even have snow hills, if the city can help them out and get rid of some of those snow hills, or we can do it. So I don't know how to even go about that. But if we just start with drainage, then we can, let's get the conversation going.
Okay, thank you for that. Go ahead, Counselor Clark. While we're going in inquiries.
Okay, go ahead. Sorry, Worship, I just had a question regarding that. Can, and this is maybe more for city clerk. Do we have an actual bylaw regarding snow hills that businesses pile up on their own properties? Or any sort of ruling on that? And the reason I ask is, and just, just further to that comment, I know just actually on my own property, there's been some fighting about where people are putting snow hills, because there was so much snow this year. Some people got a little angry. Now we have a lot of drainage problems back there, and I know this is a problem everywhere. And I wasn't sure if we have any sort of policy. It's never come across my plate or what we do there.
We, we can, we can check into that.
Yeah.
Counselor Frank, and get back to you on that. I have noticed because of the large amount of snowfall, a lot of properties are piling snow, lot, in some cases, a lot of snow right on their lots. And that is causing, you know, issues with a lot of the runoff happening.
Yeah, it is expensive to have snow hauled away, so a lot like to store it on their lots. And that's, I mean, it's your own property, so you can do what you want. But I guess, I mean, this example and, and what I'm seeing right now, and I think we're seeing in a few spots that may cause some drainage issues, which is something maybe Norm Mack wants to come and talk to council about at some point in the future. No rush, but something that we should be keeping an eye on and making sure we have at least some appropriate plans or designated areas or things like that, so that we don't have drainage issues. Because I agree with Councilor Roba, I think in that situation, there's probably a few different issues, but it does sound like the snow hills are causing a part of it, so it's something to be discussed.
Yeah, and I know in years when we have a large snowfall, you know, maybe we should look at, as a council, them not putting that kind of snow on their property. But again, I know a lot of them look at that as a cost issue with the transportation costs and say, you know what, I'll just park it here for now. But it does cause its own set of issues. But we'll get a report on that. Okay, Counselor Clark?
Thanks, Worship, nothing tonight.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Wolliser?
Thank you, Your Worship. Earlier this year, we had discussed changing our swimming lesson program as the Red Cross no longer offers swimming lessons. My understanding is that there were some trial programs that were offered. And now at citywide registration, the full slate of swimming lessons has opened up to the community. Moving forward at the resolution of these lessons, can we ask that leisure services come back and present how the lessons are going, what type of feedback the community is providing? And just see if this is the right fit for our community?
Absolutely, we can do that, thank you. Counselor Ford?
Thanks, Worship. My question or inquiry was regarding citywide registration. There's a number of sports in our community where registration is actually due by April 1st. So spring and summer sports actually are not feasible to have at citywide registration, because those, those deadlines are set by Saskatchewan baseball or softball or whatever they might be. So we're just wondering, the inquiry was whether or not we could push registration back into the month of March? And I don't know how that would work with swimming lessons, if it would goof up swimming lessons or not. But it was just a question that I had from two, two different sports in the community this year.
Okay, well, thank you for that. We can definitely ask Erin and her group and those managers, if we could do that. They would probably know best, you know, what the dynamics look like on that. Thank you. Counselor Cernick? Okay, thank you. Counselor Frank? Nothing? Okay, thank you. City clerk, did you have anything you wanted to inquire? Okay, city treasurer? Okay, well, I guess with that, do we have a motion to move into committee? Oh, one question, go ahead, Counselor Wolliser.
Do you need a motion about this council meeting that's scheduled on May 23rd?
Oh, yes, we probably should, thank you for that. My, my bad, I'm looking right at it. Anyway, my head cold isn't helping me tonight, but yes, if you don't mind, if we could have a motion to remove the May 23rd meeting, because a lot of us have gone to the Federation of Canadian Municipalities. In fact, over half the council, so it would probably be appropriate to do that. Thank you for that.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, thank you, Councilor Wallezer. You got my back. Have we got a second? Thank you, Councilor Frank. Ready for the question? All in favor? Carrie, thank you. Do we have a motion to move into committee? Thank you, Councilor Frank, seconded by Councilor Cernik. Ready for the question? All in favor? Carrie, thank you so much. We stand adjourned. Good evening and good night. Thank you.